Yeah.
So like, what do they need to confess?
I thought I was, I thought it was a misfit.
All right, we should probably get started, like we can get that, are we live, Jody? Okay, well, welcome, everyone. We will now begin the works, or excuse me, the yes, work session for the next council meeting, so we will jump right into, Jeremy is not here. Oh, there's Jen, okay, right in time. So you're number one on the item, so we're discussing the flat pay proposal. So did you have anything that you wanted to share with the council in that regard?
About flat pay?
Yeah.
This is my
Yeah, was that?
I'm not sure, can you?
Just with respect, you're combining the laws, right? I mean, I, okay, and I, I would imagine that, Wayne, do you have anything that you need to bring before the councils? I think that
No, there were no issues really that we encountered.
So if I understand, this is just putting the lot, no site plan for anything that will be on the lot, just this site plan, just the lots being combined?
That's correct. Okay, anybody have any comments or questions? Anybody, anybody here?
We're, we're not really in house, but we are doing things.
Yeah, yeah, but I'm just saying for the approval process, we're just doing this now because there isn't a site plan for whatever improvement you want, yeah.
Okay, and it doesn't look like anybody online has any comments or questions, so we'll move on. All right, the five mayors, preliminary subdivision approval, May, do you have anything you wanted to bring before the council?
I don't think so, just if you have any questions.
Okay. And anything from our planning commission or anyone else that's here? Okay.
Just recommendation to approve, that was our recommendation to city council.
And it's just the two lots, correct? One larger, one smaller.
Correct. Okay, any other comments or questions? Right, move on. All right, item three, proposed ordinance vacating a portion of roads in flat B, thousand ounce subdivisions. Do we have any comments from anybody here? Yes?
I'd like to make some, so I'm Steve Dicker from Penthair, I'm frustrated and disappointed frankly at some of the language inside the ordinance, so I direct your attention there. There, there's language as it relates to this being contingent upon and subject to the entering into a development agreement between the city and Penthair Development Honor before October 31st, 2022. That, that is, Mayor, the reason that we're frustrated is because we tried to get the entire development agreement all done before the end of the year. This is now putting a deadline that the city can or doesn't have to follow, and then puts it out to October 31st, 2022. So now, there's a new artificial deadline that's pushed out six months from today. And now we are not going to be able to start to do any work, developing those roads, working on plans, anything else, because it's going to simply be contingent upon us possibly entering into a development agreement if the city wants to by October 31st, 2022. We've been participating with the city in development for over a decade at this point. At some point in time, I, I don't know what's driving this, but we need to keep, to continue to move forward because now we're going to be another year behind, we were a year behind last year because we didn't get this done, and now we're potentially going to be into 2023 and then into possibly 2024 into doing development, at that point in time, we've been, been in this almost 14 years. And so I, I guess I would ask if it's possible that we remove that contingency from this so that we can get moving this year and potentially get some of that work done before the snow flies yet again in, in the fall. So that's, that's our, our question and concern if, if we, you know, if you could.
Yeah, no, and, and thank you, Steve, and so I, I know that one of the concerns that we are trying to address with respect to the ordinance is just that we weren't surrendering property and then if a development agreement couldn't be reached, I mean, that put us in a compromised position. With respect to the, with respect to the date, Wayne, I don't know if you have some insights on that, that you might want to share.
Our attorneys just wanted to put a date in there, there's no expectation that we're going to wait till that date to do the development agreement. But we didn't want to put a date in there for a month from now and then miss that date, then that mess up the, the, this process of approving, approving the road. So he put it far enough out so that there would be latitude if necessary, but there's no expectation that we're going to, that the city is going to wait that long before we would hopefully enter into an agreement with the development agreement. There's, I would say it's probably 80% done, and there's, there's other things that we're working on. I don't know how they will come about, we don't know, but that was the idea behind putting it so far out, just so that there was we didn't miss an earlier date and then it would mess up the, the agreement.
Mayor, Mayor, can I, can I comment on, on that? Wayne, I, I appreciate that you've been trying to work with the attorney and push that forward, but we've been doing this since last October. And I don't know why there's an issue with the vacating of the roads and why it's being tied into the development agreement. Because what is the city going to do with those roads between now and the time we get a development agreement done? Or even if we don't get a development agreement done, we still want to do the development, we're trying to push it forward. And if we can't get a development agreement done, and we have to go through all the plaits and all that kind of other stuff, we still need to do this because we have lots on those roads that we want to sell. So I'm, I'm really kind of questioning why the tie to, you know, why there needs to be a tie in the first place? Because if we don't get a development agreement done, what's the city going to do with those roads? They've been sitting there for 15 years in the case of Wofers, just sitting there.
Well, and, and I can speak to that, so I, I think that the city, and I think rightly so, expects to get value for essentially deeding property to the development, and so to me, I, I think that that actually is a reasonable request to include in the agreement where because, I mean, who knows what could happen, I mean, we don't expect it to happen, but if, if, for example, it, it fell apart and then we deeded property to Summit Creek, and then we got nothing in value in return, then that is concerning.
But, okay, we, that, that, I, I, I see your point, but the other side of that, that argument is the fact that that road has been there for 15 years and the city has done nothing with it? And the value that you're giving up frankly isn't that much, because you're giving up the surface area of the road. The sewer and everything else that's still in there, you're still keeping, and I, I just think the risk is very, very minimal. And no offense, Mayor, we've been doing this for 15 years with the city, and we have done everything that the city has asked, and now we're going to be yet another year behind. We are already late trying to get those roads developed, because we're now into April when we thought we were going to be done in December.
Well, but Steve, to be fair, part of that was at your request.
I, I agree, because the thing we're trying to do is get the roads done, we also didn't think that this was going to be an April slash May thing to get done. So I, I guess, I guess my
You guys put it on pause until we got this, this agreement done.
Uh, uh, sorry, but there has been nothing discussed between us and the members of the city council or the planning commission that this was going to be contingent upon the development agreement and the development agreement being potentially pushed out to October. I don't think anyone intends on it being pushed out to October. That is completely dependent upon the work that you and the attorneys and we do, that's, that's it, we could have an agreement next week. You think, you said that, we can have an agreement next week.
I think we could.
And, and if I could jump in too, and I, to Wayne's point, I think that all it's doing is it's not allowing it to be strung out by either side indefinitely.
No, no, it is, it strings it out indefinitely because the city has an ultimate veto right. Because the city with, with this language can say, you know what, we're going to think about it, and then on November 1st, they go, oh, you know what, yeah, we're going to have to go back and revisit that, we don't have to, we don't want to really do that.
Believe me, we don't want that any more than you do.
But, but that's
We really don't.
But David, the, here, here's part of the issue, we have done everything for 10 years trying to get this done, and now we are going to be potentially out another year because we can't get contractors up here before the snow flies again. All I'm asking, all I'm asking is for you to consider removing that condition.
So if we remove the date, if we remove the date then, is that what you're asking for, or the condition generally? Because the condition generally, I have concerns about removing the condition.
And, and, and that's okay, I'm asking you to consider removing the date and the condition, because I don't see them tying together. If, if you have a different opinion, that's fine, I'm just trying to express mine, so.
It says on or before.
I, I, I get that, but the city at this point in time has no commitment and the date means nothing.
Well, we wouldn't have a commitment if we took out the date either.
I, I understand that, so, um, that's part of the reason, I'm just saying, I don't understand why the, the necessary tie because to, to the development agreement, and frankly, I'm just frustrated with it. You know, one was for lack of communication, that it, you know, all of a sudden just shows up in the ordinance with no discussion with us, and we're trying to figure out how to get this, you know, how to get it done, and no, no offense, David and Wayne have done, done, I think, a great job for trying to get the development agreement done, but the development agreement was supposed to be done in December, and then we took the, the roads out and we're four months from then. So, guys, I, I just need help in, in trying to get through it.
No, and, and
That's, 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 that's my concern, and that's my frustration, so I'm well over my two minutes or whatever.
No, and, and I, I appreciate, you know, you sharing that, and I know we have some council members that want to, to chime in, you know, as far as the date, I, I, you know, my position on that is, I mean, I, I actually think that's to your advantage as much as it is to ours, because that way it can't be something that does get postponed indefinitely. And that is not the intention in many of the agreement, the big concern for me, and, and, and I, I'm not going to speak for Wayne, but I think for Wayne too, was just the, the yielding of property that does have, I mean, that's, that's the bargain that we struck here in vacating that portion of the roads is that the city does feel like it has to get value, because the property does have inherent value, so I, I just think that it's okay to tie that to the development agreement so that we don't and I, I, I see your point, I, I'm sorry if that seemed like a last minute inclusion, but it did seem like something that we didn't in good conscience feel that we could just surrender city property, which doesn't belong to us, it belongs to everybody, to any developer without getting value in return. All right, Carrie.
Yes, I just wanted to comment, Steve, you know, I think that as a city, we do appreciate the relationship with half of Summit Creek has gone, like you say, for a long time, three, four years ago, start, you, you started this process of, of everything. But part of it is, is that although it's been going on, there hasn't been a development agreement, and that's something that really has only been pushed in the last little while and, and it seems like maybe to you that it's been going slowly, but I think David and Wayne have really tried hard to, to, you know, meet with you and, and to, to what we've been given, it seems like they've been working really hard, and then, of course, you bring in lawyers and that does extend some time, but when I read this, I didn't see that we were waiting till October 31st. It said on or before, which to me gave us a deadline of getting that development agreement done. And so I'm kind of like, feeling like the mayor of, okay, let's get this done quickly so that we can, we can move on. And then you can feel comfortable, we can feel comfortable, we can look our citizens in the face and say, this is why we have decided to do, to deed this, these roads to, to Summit Creek. And it's not just the value of what it costs to get those roads done, but it's also then we now have a development agreement at the same time. So overall, it's for your benefit as you do sell these properties. Am I missing something there? What?
So, so a couple things, one is, we've tried to, let, let me ask this, how many other developers in the city have a development agreement? How many?
Wayne?
However, the zone that you're in requires a development agreement, the other zones do not.
Okay.
So we're, we're remiss together with you for letting this go on for two or three years without a development agreement. That's, we, we, I think we both understand the importance of that agreement, that it can play in as we go forward with the development for both you as well as the city. So that's one reason why we don't have an agreement with other developers.
Thousand Oaks had one.
They, they did, that's no longer, that's
I'll, I'll let you go review that one, we really want to have some fun, but here, here, so my point, Carrie, is if, if in fact other developers are developing land in the city and they don't have a development agreement, would the vacating of the road be different for them because they don't have a development agreement and aren't striving to get toward a development agreement?
It seems to me that's kind of hypothetical though, considering that you don't
It is, it is a hypothetical, but, but the thing is, is I think you, what you're doing is you're ending up treating the developers differently because we're trying to get a development agreement done, right? And that's, that's where my, there, there's a little bit of a disconnect, you know, as, as it comes to that, so that's the reason I just want
But I think the end goal is the same, we want the development agreement as quickly as, as we can have an agreement. Wayne and David have been acting on behalf of the council or the mayor to get that in place. But again, there are some legal things that need to be taken in consideration, and, and I know that's a lot of work, and it's a lot of, you know, there's some, some pain along the way, but ultimately the goal is to have a good, solid development. This, this vacation of the roads then is, is an addition, that was never even part of the discussion prior to just more recently. And so I think that as we add that portion in, which is to your benefit and to our benefit, but it's still something that I can see as an overall package.
I, and Carrie, I don't, I don't disagree with you, and, and Mayor, maybe a suggestion is, is that you, we take the date out or we, we take the date in, I, I don't really care, but I think the thing that we, we need from both our side and from the city's side is direction to say, look, you guys need to do this and, you know, set the date of May 31st or May 15th or whatever, if David thinks we can get it done in a week, I'm, you know, I'm there for it.
Well, I guess, I guess
But, but, but I, I think some guidance would be good as it relates to, you know, give, looking for that.
I've seen what Wayne has sent to you guys with the, the bulleted list of, these are the things that you need to resolve. I had not seen from y'all answers to those.
But partly because that's supposed to be going through your attorney.
Well, I know that the legal language does need to go through the attorney, I get that. But what I'm waiting for is I'm waiting for you guys to respond to Wayne's bulleted list of issues.
And, and David, we'll send, we'll send that out tomorrow if that's what you're waiting for. But I can tell you right now, the thing that we're trying to do is we've been directed, right? Because the document is in your control, that our council and your council met over those points, your council were going to draft responses, and in fact, when they met, they needed to get additional information to be used from you so that they could draft response, right? I mean, Mayor knows how this kind of works, documents in your control right now, and you know, it's ready, it's ready to go back and forth. We're glad to meet any time to discuss those items and to get them done, but the other thing, to be quite honest with you, is the list continues to grow. And it changes every time we meet, and then all of a sudden there's three more items added. So I, I just wanted, I'm frustrated because we need to somehow bring closure to it, and I know you're not full time on this, and I know Wayne's not full time on this, but we have to bring closure to it some way, because again, we're another year out on this if we don't get it done very, very quickly, so I just appreciate trying to push this forward instead of saying, okay, well, it's October, that's six months from now, oh, okay, that's not soon for us.
Yeah, I
So that would be, that's, that's what, that's my frustration.
My commitment to you is I have no intention of waiting until October. In fact, I, I, really, we were waiting for this agreement over the roads. Because again, you guys had said pause until we get this done, so now that we've got, hopefully we've got this done, then we can move forward with the remainder of the development agreement and move forward, that's, that's what was always in my mind.
I agree, I just, I can't be here in June or July or whatever trying to say, oh yeah, but by the way, we need to have 17 different public hearings about the development.
No, we don't have that one.
Okay, I'm just
But you do have to have that
But no, but, but that's, that's my concern, right, is that we keep going through this process and I don't know enough about the process in order to get it done quickly. So that's, that's what I'm looking for guidance from, from the city for, on exactly that.
Fair enough, yeah, thank you, Steve, and does anybody else have any comments or questions that they want to?
I would just like Wayne to talk about for a moment about what Steve said about the, that we keep adding things to the list, could you address that please?
Sure, yeah, there's been a few things that have gone on and looked at it and delved into it further. We felt there were some things that we would add, for example, maybe the last thing that we've approached Summit Creek about is there's an outstanding bonding issue, and we're not clear ourselves, and I don't think Summit Creek is either as to where the obligation is to do certain things that are being there bonded. And that, I got away from both of us, and I approached Summit Creek to, to see if they know what items are left. I thought that would be a, something good to include in the development agreement, so we all have an understanding of what things have been bonded and what needs to be done under that bond. Summit Creek came back to us and says, we're not sure, you find out. So, so what we're trying to find out now, that information through our, through our city engineers.
But, but just to be clear, it has been 100% bonded for and has been 100% bonded for for years. So whether it works then or not, we'll follow up on, right? Part of it is, is that we've changed a couple people, but it is 100% bonded for, so if in fact we decided to go away someday, you still got somebody to do it.
Yeah, and I think that the, the concern was, was just the timing, you know, and so there, there are no major hangups that would seem as between the parties. So hopefully we can, I mean, we, we appreciate your cooperation in this effort, hopefully you can understand where we're coming from.
I, I, no, I, I understand that, I'm just just frustrated because it's taking so long, so that's, and I just need guidance and help on trying to get it through.
Okay.
So just for clarification, the list isn't necessarily growing, it's just more of a checking balance that everything is
I would say that's a great characterization, Wayne, and you agree?
We've added some things to it during this bonding process where it, it no, it wasn't anywhere near okay, we've got an agreement here, let's not sign it until we have the roads done. There's probably seven, eight items there that we're still needing to discuss and come to agreement with. I'd say most of those are outside the realm of an attorney. It's an agreement, it's, we need to work with Summit Creek, and Summit Creek needs to work with us in deciding, do we leave this out? Do we not address it? Can we come to a consensus and understanding that this is something we want in it? And so there are those items remaining that are kind of outside the legal charge on that, that agreement.
Thanks, Wayne.
Mayor, one, just one last thing, and then I promise I'll shut up until the next item. And, and, and that, that is, if you could, I guess, encourage your council to engage a little bit more than they have, it's been difficult, our council has reached out a lot trying to get your council to respond, and there hasn't been any response, so I don't know whether that's you calling him and saying, hey, we need to get this done, whether it's giving Dave authority or Wayne authority to get them engaged, I don't know whether it's a fee issue, I don't know what it is, but there, there's been a lack of attention on, you know, we've tried and, you know, Craig just hasn't been as responsive as what I think he could if he had a little bit of push from the city.
When he says council, he doesn't mean
I know, I'm like, I gotta follow his response. Yeah, he got a legal counsel, right?
Okay.
With, with an S, not a C.
Okay, thank you, all right, well, let's, nothing further on that, we'll move on to Steve's next complaint.
All right. You've been labeled, Steve, so sorry.
No, I'm going to, upcoming public hearing made in 2022, Planning Commission Recommendations for Changes in City Code and City Development and Instruction Standards. Okay, well, Wayne, do you want to weigh in on this?
This is kind of more of a heads up, we approved quite a few things in our last planning commission meeting, following the public hearing, and we're waiting for, for that public hearing and our inspection and approval of those things to refer off to you. Now it takes a public hearing for you all to have, and Jody's coming to schedule in that, and then also the county committee after that.
Thank you, yeah, and we didn't want to do it tonight because it would have been really crowded too, like, I think that that was one of the reasons. Okay.
I, I can wait, I can wait until open comment if you want me to do that.
Well, we're keeping it pretty loose tonight, I guess, so
So, this, this is, this is my, I have a question on Title 11 dash 2 dash 1, which is adding a definition for open space. Wayne, I, I think I would ask the planning commission to consider changing it slightly to say an area generally set aside in a subdivision for public use, and, but I think that needs to also include common areas for the HOAs. So, because we have what we call open space inside our, you know, that's common area in the HOA, so you may want to think about just that.
And I would agree with that because the, I know the Mountainville overlay zone requires open space, and part of what they did with, with, you know, rearranging the plot, plaits and everything was to have some of their open space be the HOA common area.
Right.
So
And we bought, and we just deeded a bunch of property to the HOA, so I want to make sure that that's all of a sudden not so, anyhow.
It needs, it needs to count against your open space.
Okay, thank you.
Well, one of the less going back, which would be further delayed with that, I think if there's validity to that, then let's include that in, in your public hearings, and, and you can change our recommendation however you'd like, but maybe take that into consideration in your public hearing and for modification of what we provided to you in that regard.
Can I ask a question about that? Would you include things like the clubhouse and the swimming pool as part of that?
Those are in our common area, so if you want to restrict it to non-building area, that might be something you may want to consider. Right, that's
I just, when I think of open space, I don't think of clubhouses.
I, I, it's really undeveloped area, I guess, you know, you can come up with what the word is there, and I don't want to get into like defining what
Minimally developed.
Yeah, I don't want to get into like defining building height, you know, as we go through this.
Oh, we do that all the time.
Yeah, I, I understand that, so that's, I just want to make Yeah, I, I understand that, so that's, I just want to make sure that it's something that we could easily define against, you know, against, so.
Okay, thank you.
And just technicality, Jody, we have time to change that to add, add into what we were.
You can take their recommendation and you can adjust the ordinance however you want.
Yeah, we can do it as part of a motion.
Just that night, yeah, that night, I'm reaching out to Steve right now on an email and asking what you would like it to include, and that way we can follow up and.
Okay, I just didn't know if it had to be out there prior so that the public could comment then on that night. Okay, we can adjust it.
Okay, thank you, Sharon.
Um, I think public has a certain connotation to it. There are citizens in Woodland Hills that think they can use the trails in Summit Creek. Yet we're told that we as the public cannot use that because they're an HOA. So public has a certain connotation to the citizens of Woodland Hills.
Okay, thank you, good point. All right, anything else? Then we will move on from there and close this work session. And jump right into the city council meeting. And, uh, Councilmember Hilliard, if you would lead us in the pledge, and then Councilmember Hunt, if you would offer that invitation.
Yeah, please, sir. Please, please. I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good morning, gracious, heavenly Father, we're thankful for the opportunity to meet together tonight as council and as city to. Move forward on progress and developments and different things that we need to attend to. Please help us to be mindful of the citizens and all concerned that we will make wise decisions. And we're grateful for all of you having to say these things, amen, Jesus Christ, amen.
Amen, thank you. Okay. Item eight, consent agenda. Uh, March twenty second, twenty twenty two, city council meeting minutes, and March twenty ninth, twenty twenty two, city council meeting. We got a motion to approve.
Look to approve the consent agenda.
Okay, we got a motion from Councilmember Malkovich and a second by Councilmember Hunt. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion carried. Okay, uh, now we will, uh, continue on to public comments, um.
Steve?
I've said my, I've said my piece.
Okay.
Yeah, I, I just, excuse my frustration, I just. Just trying to get work done, so.
We need to hear it, so.
Yeah, we can appreciate that. Okay, uh, do we have anybody here present that would care to make any comments? And Lucky is the only one online, uh, no comment there. All right, uh, we will close the public comment portion and move on to business and discussions. Item eleven, approval of thousand oak flat K.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, we have a motion from Councilmember, uh, Hilliard.
I'll second that.
And a second from Councilmember Pratt. And this is a roll call vote, so Councilmember Kiniston?
Yes.
Oh my gosh, I am out to lunch.
I heard you.
Good thing I've got a sandwich. Yeah, I, I, I know, but foolish. Okay, uh, Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
I don't know why that slipped me. Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
And Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Okay, motion, uh, motion carried.
You sit, want me to be last?
I am.
You're good.
Got a lot on my mind. All right, item twelve. Preliminary plat approval by Maples. Councilmember Malkov, oh, makes a motion first.
I'll make a motion.
Okay, Councilmember Hunt makes a motion. Councilmember Pratt, second. All right, Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kiniston?
Yes.
And Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Motion carried. Item thirteen, ordinance vacating a portion of roads in flat B. I'll entertain a motion.
So, Steve?
Don't, don't all jump at the state.
No, no, no. Would you prefer the date or not the date?
The, the date's, the date's mine. Okay, the, the, the issue is, I don't want the date to become a.
You don't want that to be the end date, yeah. Okay, so I make a motion to approve the ordinance as written.
Okay, Councilmember Pratt makes a motion, and a second by Councilmember Kiniston. All right, Councilmember Malkovich?
Yes.
Councilmember Hilliard?
Yes.
Councilmember Pratt?
Yes.
Councilmember Kiniston?
Yes.
Councilmember Hunt?
Yes.
Motion carried. Okay, um, I will entertain a motion to adjourn. Councilmember Malkovich?
I'll second that.
Councilmember Hilliard, the second, all in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? We adjourn.
I just want to know who's going to call Guinness.
Yeah, nine minutes early.
No, this is like the fastest city council meeting that has ever happened.
Well, the fun is about to begin at seven P M, whether.
That should work. It's already on.
All right, uh, welcome, everybody. I'm gonna call this meeting to order and, uh, want to, uh, thank those of you who are here. And, uh, and those of you who are participating remotely, or there are any, I actually don't know, maybe there are some. But, uh, uh, I would just like to give you an overview, um, concerning what, uh, the agenda for tonight will be. Um, so first, we're gonna have, uh, our Chair of the Planning Commission, Wayne Franzen, Wayne Franzen, lead us in the pledge. And then afterward, um, I'll give some opening remarks. And then we'll turn some time over to the council members to give some remarks. And then the remainder of the time will be turned over to you for questions. And, uh, we hope to get this wrapped up by eight thirty, but I guess we'll see how it goes. So, uh, Wayne, take it away.
If everyone would please arise. Join in the pledge of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. And to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. When I was running for office, there was a high level of accusation, simulation, and unfounded character assassination. It would have been easy to assume, based on some of the rhetoric, that the city was a full-on dumpster fire. I am happy to report that in four months since taking office, I have observed just the opposite. The city, in an effort to keep expenses down, has a small staff, including our unpaid, full-time employee, Wayne Franzen. They wear many hats beyond their job descriptions. They work long and often unusual and disruptive hours. I meet with all of them regularly, and they are continuously looking for ways to save money. Or fund additional, or find additional sources of revenue, or otherwise improve our lives. In my opinion, we do them and ourselves a great disservice when we publicly suggest they are corrupt, or incompetent, or both. Especially if it is done only to advance or mask our agenda. Yes, the city employees, as well as us elected officials, do work for the residents in a very real sense. And I think that all of us here at the city recognize that the public sector is a little different, and that some criticism goes with the territory. We also recognize that we are answerable, answerable to you, but that does not mean we are your punching bags, or are obliged to endure indignities. And baseless attacks on our character. You've all been employees or employers. Can you imagine any employee putting up with that kind of abuse in a private setting? Would you? I would not. We can do better than that as residents, we can do better than that as human beings. We may disagree with decisions, mistakes even get made sometimes. I believe in the value of accountability from city employees as well as elected officials. But anytime anyone's life is put under a microscope, it is not hard to find discrepancies. It is not hard to find failings. How would any of us fare under that level of scrutiny? And social media has a way of amplifying your criticism. So what am I suggesting? What am I asking? Is that we please discipline ourselves. We can disagree, but there are healthy ways to disagree, and there are coercive ways to disagree. Arthur Brooks once said in an interview, quote, "When we treat each other with contempt, it naturally makes it harder to have conversations about what we disagree in." The key to solving this problem is not to disagree less, but to disagree better. I think that applies here. Our disagreements do not need to include accusations. It would be nice to start with the assumption that those working on our behalf are doing the best they can. And from there, we can, in a collaborative way, explore together ways those efforts might be improved as needed. And I would also add, it would be nice if we would express thanks to our city employees and volunteers more often. They deserve it. Thank you. I'm only getting started. Now onto the budget, so I doubt that we made a cost for that.
Can we have, can we have anyone that's been a volunteer stand up when we can?
That would be a great idea, yeah, uh, all volunteers, please rise.
Yeah, everyone that volunteers for the city. Sherry? Wayne? Chloe?
All right, now, the state of the city, uh, budget-wise, what can I say? The city is very challenging to financially administer. We have high property taxes, and that is and remains a substantial source of our revenue. We have significant expenses. While we may eventually be able to get some commercial tax base, I just cannot see that ever becoming a substantial source of revenue. So what do we do? I have three suggestions. Suggestion one, recognize what we are, and it's awesome. As some of you know, I'm an attorney and work for a large firm based in Salt Lake City. At least I do until Friday. At our annual retreats, we would have business meetings where we would discuss ways to court really big clients. You know, the big Fortune one hundred coastal, uh, companies that, uh, just throw money at you. Uh, we were a well-regarded firm and had a deep talent pool. All kinds of ideas were thrown around. Year after year, this topic would come up, and for me, it left me kind of motivated, thinking, yeah, why not us? But at the same time, it left me frustrated, because making those sorts of inroads was almost an impossibly insurmountable task, given our competition and our location. Then, one retreat, one of our more seasoned shareholders, in response to the same question, gave what I thought was some of the best advice I had heard in this respect over all the years. It was in essence, we need to recognize what we are and what we are not. What we are is a great local firm with great local client base, and there's a great opportunity in embracing it. For me, it was a liberating notion. Instead of constantly feeling frustrated at what we are not, we could seize upon what we were, and recognize what a blessing it in fact was. Applying this to our city, let's consider what we have. We get to live in a mountain community with large wooded lots and the serenity of nature all around us. We have easy access to hiking trails and breathtaking views of the mountains and the valley. I was just at a conference, uh, this past week, and higher density was discussed as a way to improve revenues. And in our world of housing shortages, there's a fair amount of pressure for cities to go that route. Sometimes I feel kind of guilty in some respects, having all this open space, but. My point is, it's an increasing anomaly to be able to live in a community with wooded acreage like we have. Another thing that we have is an amazing fire department, a department that is the envy of all surrounding departments. We can know that in a variety of emergencies, we have literally in our backyard, a group of sophisticated, well-trained volunteers. That can respond to fires, to medical emergencies, and that are also there to drive Santa and the Easter Bunny around to hand out candy during the holidays. As you have all seen. As you have all seen, in a snowstorm, Woodland Hills, though it gets more, more snow than any of the surrounding areas, is the safest place to be. Because of our amazing plowing system and drivers. As I'm coming up Snowpack Woodland Hills Drive, it's such a relief to reach the roundabout, where the roads are clear and the path is safe. But all these amenities carry with, they carry with them a price. It's not inexpensive to operate a fire department, it's not inexpensive to have such a well-rounded snow plowing system. Uh, suggestion two, do what we can to get the most from our revenues. Let me first talk about employee wages. I know that employee wages, city employee wages are always a popular one to put in the crosshairs, especially during an election year. Wage studies with respect to our employees were done previously, and the conclusion was, they were in line with market values. In the current employee-driven market, I expect we are more likely underpaying our employees. As for other ways to make the most of our revenues, Craig Northup and I have been having conversations about trying to blend. Our fire and EMS services with those of surrounding communities, to try to develop more of a unified fire and EMS system. That could potentially streamline our effort, efforts and share some expenses. I'm not sure it will get off the ground, but we're seeing where it might lead. Corbett has great ideas about trying to utilize used oil from the Nevo School District for fuel at the city center. It requires some initial investment, and we are probably not in a position to make that jump yet, but we keep it in front of us as a possibility. Suggestion three, is to think about, uh, revenue sources a little bit outside the box. There are a few initiatives that are being pursued by members of the council, and I will let them explain their efforts themselves. But some of the things that we're looking at is bringing garbage collection in-house. Uh, we're looking at the possibility of parks or trails fees, which will be like a tax, and nobody likes fees, myself included. But in doing it this way, um, it would be dedicated to those types of endeavors. And then we also get to keep one hundred percent of the revenues associated with it, as opposed to with property taxes, where we only get a portion of it. Uh, we've been talking about ways to do a similar arrangement with our roads, where we get more bang for our buck, so to speak. Corbett has great ideas about utilizing fill from local construction sites and building out the next phase of our flood mitigation efforts. Uh, where we could potentially get paid for taking dirt that we would otherwise need to haul in to build out this project. So, for me, when I was running for office, I thought it'd be cool to have an ice skating rink in the park. Come the holidays, I, we used to go to the Spanish Fork Lights, and, and, uh, we stopped when it was an hour and a half wait. But Spanish Fork is making a ton of money with its holiday season all activities, and I was thinking that. We could do something there, grants that could be utilized to, uh. To at least fund a portion of such a, uh, an endeavor, uh, and then we can have concessions. I won't belabor the point, but there are some ideas that I think that could be utilized to be creative and seeking revenue sources. All right. Item three, legal. I'm gonna take a drink for this one.
Just a lot.
Our legal disputes are costing us dearly. Not only is it diverting scarce monetary resources, but it's taking a substantial amount of time and attention from city employees, volunteers. And us elected officials that could be devoted to improving the city's operation. Maybe none of you fight with your spouses, but Monica and I do fight, Monica on the back row there, from time to time. The funny thing is, is sometimes it will start over a disagreement about one thing. And then it evolves into something seemingly completely unrelated. By the end, sometimes we've forgotten about why we were fighting to begin with. And that's sometimes where it feels like where we are in the current legal matter. One of the reasons I ran for office is because I feel well-qualified to manage the city's legal matters. And that may be the role for, uh, for me for the next four years. I think it's a crap legacy, I would rather build an ice skating rink. But if that's how I can serve the residents of the city, then so be it. I would say to those involved in the president's view, I'm sure you have your reasons for continuing the appeals. I can assure you, it is not improving or helping the city. First, there's no insurance money. This is being bankrolled by the taxpayers. Our insurer considers these appeals to be land use defense, and initially appropriated twenty-five thousand dollars for our legal fees. $25,000 for our legal fees, which is, for a legal defense, is already very small, and that is long since spent. Our insurer previously agreed to give us another $25,000, but has since taken a different position, saying that since these subsequent appeals arise from the same set of facts, we're not entitled to the additional money. And particularly galling, we owe them $1,000 because they overpaid us. We are working with our attorneys and trying to get some additional coverage, but all that really means is we're paying our attorneys to fight, in this fight on two fronts now. And here's the thing I don't understand, and our attorneys do not understand. In many of these cases, even if the appealing party wins, it is largely only a procedural win and gets us no closer to what the dispute is really about, or what I can assume the dispute is really about. I have to admit, after two years' involvement on the Board of Adjustment and repeated requests as mayor to the appealing party to clearly frame the issues and the damages alleged, I am not even really sure what the dispute is about or what the endgame is. Have you ever played Pin the Tail on the Donkey, where you're blindfolded and then spun around in a circle and then set loose? That's how it feels sometimes. But we're obliged to file responses to everything filed. Because if we don't, then all the allegations made in the various proceedings are deemed admitted, and that would put the city in a terribly compromised position. So, what I would ask the parties behind the appeals to consider, I would plead with them to consider what your end objective is, and do these appeals really get you there? If you have specific objectives, please tell me what they are. If your end objective is government reform, then I suggest you use the election and campaigning process to vote out those with whom you disagree, and not use the land use appeals process. If your objective is legislative reform, then work with the Planning Commission and the city council and myself to advocate those changes you think would improve our code for the benefit of our residents, not the land use appeals process. If you believe that you have been damaged, tell us how specifically and to what amount. And this is not a figure I intend to take at your say-so. That would be unwise to respond in that way, but I can't tell you it will start a conversation, and I am a reasonable person. The approach currently being taken only hurts the most vulnerable in our community because, like I mentioned, we have to respond. We have to pay attorneys to respond. The money comes from an already strained revenue pool. We made the decision this upcoming year to make major cuts in areas such as road maintenance and equipment related to fire and EMS to account for the $150,000 anticipated legal budget. In discussions with the Finance Committee and the city council, this year with inflation and rising costs across the board for the city and our residents, including fuel, groceries, and utilities, the timing seemed wrong to request a large tax increase to fund legal disputes. So my recommendation was to tighten our belts and make cuts in other areas. But next year, we'll have no choice. No party gets to dictate how the city's ordinances are applied against neighboring property. That would be a disastrous precedent for us to set. Our laws do not let neighbors dictate the construction of neighboring homes. So that's my plea to the parties involved in this dispute. For the rest of us, we will continue to hold our noses and forge ahead, but I do not want you to mistake my olive branch as an indication that we are taking this line down. We are in ongoing discussions with our legal counsel to make sure that the city's and its residents' interests are protected to the fullest extent possible. Thank you for your attention, and as I mentioned, I'll now turn the time over to our council, and then we'll take some questions in the journey.
(Applause).
Yeah. Now that means I can take all the time I want. So.
Sure to say your names before you start.
Thank you. Doral Jimmiston. I'm on the city council with this fine group, and we've recently spent a lot of time together. And I promise, this guy that just spoke has the best interest of the city in mind. I've listened, kind of rode in the backseat of his car when we were headed somewhere, and I listened to phone conversations between him, and I'll just tell you, between him and the insurance company. And he's always speaking what is best for the city. And he is the intelligent voice on the phone, in my opinion, explaining to these attorneys and insurance people why, why he says the things he does. He does it well. I have, I have seen other council-mayor relationships in my life, and many of them are sour. They're, they're, they don't get along. They have different interests. We do not agree on things, but we like each other. And that's, that's the first step in anything that we, we need to do, is to at least respect each other, and that we do. I'm appreciative of the election we just held and the new people that, that, that ran for election and our new council members. They are a great addition to our city. I always miss the old council members because we develop relationships that are, are good and strong and, and meaningful to me in my life. Now importantly, I wanted to mention to you that there is a chipping plan again this spring, which I'm very excited about. A lot of work goes into planning these chipping occasions, and so if you'll put your piles out beginning now, on May 31st, we'll have them for a couple of weeks, and we want you to, to get your fresh piles out there near the road so that those can be done. But once your street is chipped, it's over for your street, so just be aware of that. Not sure what day your street will get done, but if you start now, you can, you have time to, to get that out there. And we always surprise the people that come and do chipping in our city with the massive amounts of piles and, and things that we put out. They know we are really diligently working on fire mitigation, and, and that means a lot to our neighboring cities that know we are a tinderbox. So, we have a lot of respect from, from people in the county that we do work hard on that. I do want to mention on our fire department, we still have the best-maintained trucks of any fire department in Utah County. If, if something, during our training, which I'm glad about, during our training, we find little things that need to be fixed and adjusted, and those get done the same day they're reported. And that's, that's unheard of in the, in the fire departments across the county. Our fire chief is a skillful mechanic, and, and he takes care of the stuff immediately when we notify him. So we appreciate that as members of the department. Again, I support the mayor, and I support the ideas that he's trying to do for you as citizens, and I see positive effort there. And he's made a mark in my mind about doing what's best for the city. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Carrie Malkovich. I know most of you in this room, but welcome and thank you for coming here tonight. I echo what Doral said. You know, all the different councils that we have served on, again, we don't get along all the time. We don't agree, I should say not get along, but we don't agree on every vote, but we do have a high respect for each other, and, and we're friends. And we live in a community where we're all friends. We know each other. Some of our kids were raised together. We, we have a bond that's different than other cities, and I think when people come here, they feel that. They feel that, that hometown friendship. They feel that we care about each other, and that's important to us, and that, that is one of the things that we value in our quality of life. We love our outdoors, but we also love our neighbors. With that said, the mayor's asked each of us to kind of talk about some of the responsibilities that we have in the city. As you know, the mayor said that we have a small staff that professionally help us in many ways, but as you noticed, he didn't say we have a city manager, someone that holds everything together. The mayor, with his responsibility is kind of the glue, but each of the council people take part of that city management. We each have a role that's a little bit more significant than maybe other cities in the county. They're always surprised when they find out how many different roles each of us have and how much responsibility we have in the city. So I will tell you a few of mine. Communications. One of the things, we have Chloe here. We serve on the communication team. If any of you are interested in serving on that committee, just let me know. We try to put out the, the weekly newsletter, and hopefully you found that helpful to you, sharing things that are going on in our city, as well as updating any information that you may need to know about, dates and places, and also, sometimes we get to highlight people for what they've done. If you are not on the mailing list, please let me know, and we will add you. It's really an important resource we have. Next is social media. You will know that we have several, several people who have started their own community news pages, but we have one city official page, the Woodland Hills, Utah. And that is our official city page, and that is where we post anything from the city that, that we want you to know about. We may share it to the other pages, but it always comes straight to, back to our official page. And we want you to recognize, sometimes people want to just engage on social media, and, which is great to ask a question, but we want you to know that officially, we have asked the staff not to answer on social media. And sometimes, as council people, we may chime in and send you to the right direction, but that's not really the forum for all city communication. It's for giving you some information, but if you have a question, we really prefer that you call or text us individually, all of our numbers, and everything about us is online. We, sometimes I even get calls from Woodland Hills, California, because our numbers are so out there. But our city staff is welcoming you to call and ask questions anytime. Feel free to reach us out to us, and if we don't answer you on social media, we may have missed your question, or it's just not appropriate in that setting unless it's something on that, that official page. So just be patient with us when it comes to that, recognizing we have other ways that we would prefer to talk with you. And we always welcome your calls and texts. I said the newsletter comes out weekly. The other thing that is on my hat is emergency management. I have the emergency manager for our city. We have been doing lots of things since the fire, a lot of our post-fire mitigation work. I attend a lot of trainings and meetings on behalf of our city, liaison with the other city emergency managers in, in our county, as well as our county sheriff department, the emergency management department with the county. Recently, we, every city is asked to have an official emergency management plan. Well, we've had a plan, but officially, there are certain things that have to take place. And so, we petitioned the county for a grant, and we were able to get that, and we will be able, we will be the first one on the list to, we, we asked for the money for the county, and we will be the first city on the list to have that partnership with the county to get our plan in place. We have a task force that we've been forming. If any of you have a desire to serve in emergency management, let me know. We have several people who have come forward, all the municipalities who want to serve in that capacity, and we're, we're going to have a meeting here at the first part of May. And then we have one more post-fire mitigation project that we're working on, an additional basin, but this time it is on current public property. It will not be affecting anyone, but it will be to help mitigate potential flood and debris flow. So we're in that design phase right now, but it is going forward as an NRCS project. I also serve on the Utah Lake Commission, and we just recently formed the Utah Lake Authority, which will give us a little bit different role. Previous on the commission, each city had to pay in. Luckily, with our budget, we don't have to pay in anymore. The finances will come from the state. If you'd like to know more about what's happening at Utah Lake, there's lots of, lots of things happening, and more than I can tell you in a soundbite, but let me know if you have any questions regarding to that. I sit on the, the board for the Leagues of Cities and Towns, representing small cities. There are 18 of us on that board, and so we are very involved during the legislative session. So this last session, there were over 200 bills that affected cities and towns. Some of them, we appreciated, and some of them, we fought hard against. And so, during the legislative session, we spend, I spend a lot of time at the Capitol working with our legislators, not just the ones that represent our city, but all over the state, trying to make sure that you're protected as, as residents of a municipality. And then, lastly, recently, the Communication Committee applied for a community development grant, and we received $116,000. So that should help our budget just a little bit, but we will be doing some analysis and data on what we can possibly do with regards to, as we move forward, we're doing our, our next general plan, but also how we might look at what our revenue streams are and the possibilities. So it's more of an analytics and data collection grant, but we have some specific things in mind, and if you would like to help on that committee, again, you're welcome to. We always appreciate volunteers, and each of you come to the table with a different set of, of skills and experiences, and we want to be able to utilize those to, for us, and also to give you the opportunities to serve in our community. Again, if you have any questions or you would like to serve on any of these committees, let me know. Thanks.
My name is Janet Lunt, and I also serve on the city council. And I'm one of the newbies, so I'm still figuring all this out. And I just wanted to talk about a little bit, not very much, but just touch on the city budget and just let you know that we're all working really hard on the budget. We talk about it at every council meeting, and as we're going through the line items, there's a lot of groaning going on because we're feeling the pain, and I just want you to know that we don't take that lightly. Like, we're really, it's a lot of blood, sweat, and tears on, on that budget, mostly by the mayor. Mostly we groan at his suggestions, but we're trying to do what's best for everybody. So one of the things that I'm over is city events, and so we're working to bring, you know, some more events to the city. We're looking at some new ideas. Right now, we have planned for this year, we have, just had the Easter Bunny. We have a fire expo. We have Woodland Hills Days, Trunker Tree Lighting, and Santa Coming to Town. We've had some other suggestions for things like a farmer's market, maybe a community garden, a community yard sale, or even like a game night that happened once a month or once a quarter or something like that, just a chance for people to get together. So if you have any interest in any of those things, or if you'd like to help with any of those things, we always need lots of helpers. Carrie said the same thing. So those are some of the things. One of the things about the city events is that we get donations. Like, we just had the Easter Bunny, and all the candy was donated. So that doesn't come out of the city budget. So if you're thinking, well, you're talking about cutting the budget, and then you're talking about all these events. We have a lot of very, very generous people in our community that want those things to happen, and so they step forward and say, hey, I'll buy the candy. I'll help sponsor the meal, or I'll come and donate my time, or whatever. So we have a lot of good involvement, and so that saves so that it doesn't come out of the budget. One of the other things that I'm over is volunteers, and I gotta be honest, this is the thing that scares me the most. So we have a lot of projects and things like that, and we need to get volunteers. It seems like it's getting harder and harder to get people to volunteer. We're all super busy. We have a lot of things going on, and maybe we volunteered a lot and were burnt out, and you know, we feel like maybe it's not our turn right now. But I'm asking for all of your help when I reach out, when we have a specific project, and I know we're gonna have some coming up. We do need to finish the split rail fence scene that is by the park. I don't know if you've seen that. I think we need to work, finish the rest of that. We have a mitigation project that we're gonna need, and then also our events. So we'll be reaching out, and I would love it if you all volunteered. That would be amazing. So one of the other things that I'm over is parks, trails, and recreation. This is one of the fun ones for me, and we are working on several things. We're working on maintaining the trail, and we want to get a schedule set up where we go and make sure the water bars are maintained, and that everything is good, and that the trail doesn't get too rough, so that everyone can enjoy it. We're also talking about maybe being able to have some benches along the trail, where if somebody wanted to sponsor a bench for a family member, maybe someone that's passed, maybe a spot that was special to them, we can look at it and see if you wanted to sponsor a bench up there. We think it'd be lovely, there's maybe three or four spots that a bench, where you can look over the valley, would be really nice for everybody to use. So that's something that we're working on. And then we're also looking into, Sherry is working hard on looking into some grants for a pickleball court, possibly one or two up at the park, and maybe a basketball court. Those are some things that we've seen some interest in. Again, that will be, that would be a grant, and it would be over by the pavilion where it is right now. We want to keep it so it's not super close to houses, but more kind of in the center of the park. of the park. And we are thoughtful about that. We would want to make sure that there were hours, that there wasn't a lot of light pollution or noise pollution from that. But we do want something where the community can utilize the park more. So any suggestions on that, too? Volunteers would be amazing. And then just the last thing that they're working on is the dark, kind of a Dark Skies Initiative, is something that we would like to see in our community. And that doesn't mean no lights. It just means less lumens, or the lights pointing down, just so that it's not bright, shining on your neighbor's house, shining up at the sky, so that we can enjoy the beautiful stars that we have here in our community. So that's something that you'll be hearing more about in the future. And then just my last thing, and it's not a duty of mine, and it's already been touched on quite a bit, but this is the social media thing. There's a lot of things on there that are really good, and sometimes, some of the comments go off the rails. And I know it's gonna get me in trouble one of these days, but I, there's some, you know, if there's something that's really wrong, I just, I try to let things go. I will comment sometimes, or try to correct something. If it's just a post, I'm not that worried, but when somebody thinks that's the truth, and then they take it and they run with it, and they, they go from here to clear over here, it is concerning. I don't want people to get upset about something maybe that isn't factual. So we're gonna try and be really careful in our comments on that. If we comment at all, some of us don't want to, you know, think that we shouldn't comment, because it is a liability. But I do want to make sure that we can maybe link back to our main page, or to the city website where the actual information is, so you can see what the facts are, just to kind of keep things straight. So I've done that a few times. It's not to beleaguer anybody, or shame anybody, it's just because we want to be careful that things don't go off the rails, and that people don't get upset about things that are unnecessary, because most of it is good on there, but every once in a while, there's something that's just a little bit off. So, and that's all I have. Thank you.
This is really short. I'm Ben Hilliard, I'm on the City Council. I was appointed in January, and it's been fabulous. I had loved being able to serve each of you in the city, especially because at one point, I didn't think I would get that opportunity. For those of you who don't know, I actually ran against Mayor Wynder, and so I want to take a little bit of time as kind of an opportunity to talk a little bit about him, because I have a, a little bit of a unique view, because I have the opportunity, if I chose to, to be hypercritical of him. But I have to say, that it has been an absolute joy and a pleasure to work with Mayor Wynder, to see him as he has filled these immense shoes that Wendy has left. He is the right man for the job right now, and it's been my privilege to be able to work with him, kind of as what I campaigned on from an administrative standpoint, to assist in that role where he has that need. But to see him, the way he works, just as Doral commented, to be able to handle a lot of our legal challenges in a way that we have not had in the past. And that's not a dig at any of our past administrations, as much as a skillset that Mayor Wynder has. And so, I want you guys all to know how wonderful it is, how lucky we are to have the mayor that we do. He's a fabulous mayor. It's also been my privilege to be able to work with these great people. It's been kind of commented that we had a conference that we attended for our training and benefit to the city this past week, and it was of absolute joy. Unfortunately, we missed one of them. They weren't able to join us, but getting to know everybody else has been a joy. And these people love our wonderful city. And they, we take, you've heard a lot about the heat we sometimes get as elected officials. I think that just goes with the job. I guess you could say every elected official's a little bit of a masochist. But it has been an absolute joy, and these people love the city of Woodland Hills. And we're doing everything we can to make it the greatest city we can. Some of my roles, I don't know if maybe the mayor had something against me, I don't know, but he gave me all the crappy jobs. I'm over sewer, and I'm over solid waste. Those were Bob's old jobs, so they just got, yeah, I inherited them. But as the mayor referenced, one of the things that I typically focus on, and I think everybody might be getting a little sick of me talking about it, is I desperately grab and am always looking for every potential way the city can gain money, at the least potential impact to the residents of Woodland Hills. Because I know that there are many great opportunities that we could have to generate revenue, that we maybe haven't thought of, or we did think of in the past, and it didn't necessarily reflect as a great option then, but may now. And so, I'm digging every single cent I can out of every single thing that makes sense. And some of them correct me on that, and hopefully I'm teachable enough to learn. But one of those things that I'm looking at quite rigorously right now is the potential for bringing garbage in, garbage collection into the city, which we could generate a decent amount of revenue for our city. Potential partnerships with other cities to then be able to take on that as well. One of those things is, as a member of the Solid Waste Board, I have been able to work with the Spanish Fork team, and they have worked extensively at looking at taking on their own garbage as well. And so, I've been able to acquire the engineering study that they paid a lot of money for, that we were able to get for free, to be able to look at those numbers, what is the impacts. Because one of the things that we are very cognizant of on the council, is what is the sustaining dollar amount, as well as the initial capital investment? And so, we're looking at those types of things. Now, one thing that we're very cognizant of as well, is what happens if we buy a garbage truck and it breaks down? Now, we have to call backup waste management, get them back up here to collect all our garbage for an exorbitant fee, which would drain all revenue that we just created. So I've been working with the mayor of Provo, and she is absolutely amazing. She is an amazing mayor, but she is looking at trying to help us in any way we can, potentially. I don't want to speak for her, or before the, you know, put the cart before the horse here, but at being able to use one of their extra garbage trucks in the case to mitigate our risk if ours goes down, while it is being then repaired, if possible. So we're looking at all potential, things that could either generate revenues, or that could go sideways, that actually would end up costing us revenues. So we're looking at all that risk mitigation practice. So we've got a lot of really cool things that we're working on from a financial standpoint, and that gets me really excited. The other things I'm with Janet and Sherry with, the Parks and Trails. I'm with David on the Public Works Committee, and it's, there's so many great things, but I'll leave that to them, because I've talked too much already. Thank you.
So I'm David Pratt, and also serving on the City Council. I just had a memory that hit me while the mayor was talking. Even before I moved into Woodland Hills, I served on the WOOPA Board, which was the homeowners' association for what was pretty much all of Woodland Hills at that time. And I still remember to this day, one of the very first votes that I took was where I voted to write a forty-five thousand dollar check to the city for roads. Because that's what we did with our WOOPA fees back then, is we collected all the WOOPA fees, and then all but a very small percentage of it went straight to the city to cover our road expenses. Now, I want you to just imagine how much you'd get done with forty-five thousand dollars worth of roads today. I could maybe do my driveway. But the point is, is that that's our history. That's where we came from as a city. It was small, it was small budget, it was very much trying to be as absolutely frugal as we could possibly be with our budget. And so, that's, that's, that's still who we are and what we are. And so, I just wanted to bring up that memory. I also wanted to thank the many residents who have served on past councils. And let me just give you an example of something that just happened. So many, many years ago, there was an initiative in the South Utah County where they were going to build a regional sewer treatment plant. They bought the property with money combined with from the state, and then also from each of the cities. Each city kind of contributed a portion based upon their population. Bought the land, it was out in Spanish Fork, at Springville, kind of way out there. And come to find out, it ended up being too expensive to build. But the thing that I want to call out was that previous councils were willing to contribute towards that kind of an initiative. Well, just recently, because we, it was decided not to build that sewage treatment plant, they decided to sell the land, and as a result, our city got back way more money than we contributed. We got back about seventy-five thousand dollars. So that's due to people who made good decisions many, many moons ago, to be a part, to contribute, to work together with other cities, and sometimes it works out in the way you expect, and sometimes it works out in other ways. So anyway, okay, so, couple of things. What do I work on? I work on Water, Roads, Public Works Finance Committee. I work with the Planning Commission, and I work with Water, as I kind of already mentioned. That's how I got involved with the sewage treatment plant. It's usually been this job. Anyway, the other thing that I've kind of taken as my personal thing, is just to kind of modernize some of the ways that we do a few things in the city. And so, let me just kind of bring up a few things. So, to prove that we actually do listen, one of the things that I heard almost from the get-go, was that we were having a problem getting our inspections done. Now, it's easy for us to maybe point fingers and whatever, but let me just give you the stats, because I just barely looked them up. When I first got on the City Council, we were averaging nine new home building permits per year. We, right now, have thirty-five new home building permits. You can't do that with one inspector, because the inspections are timely, they take, they take time, they take energy, following up, re-inspections, et cetera, et cetera, et cetera. So one of the things that we did is we actually outsourced our building inspections to a company that can do them a lot more, well, when we have a lot of inspections, they can send a lot of inspectors. When we don't have very many inspections, they don't have to send very many inspectors. Now, you might ask, isn't that really expensive? And the answer is yes, and it's all paid for by the building permit. So it's not a city expense, it's paid for by the person who's getting the building permit. And as you can see, there's no way we could have done that on our own. Another complaint was that the building permits, our paperwork process wasn't very good around the building permits. It was unpredictable. Which version did we have? Those of you who aren't familiar with building, a lot of times, a building plan will get submitted, it'll get reviewed, they have to make changes, come back, get reviewed. Which version was it? So forth and so on. Well, we now use online software that keeps track of all of that, and we always have the latest building permit. And also, a very important thing, is it can't be changed. Meaning, when an inspection is done, if the inspector finds five things wrong, they don't go back and just kind of erase something. It's literally a record that we can go back and look at over and over and over again. So our record-keeping is actually accurate. Another complaint, city website, it's hard to find stuff, can't find anything, can't tell what the agenda is, et cetera. Again, we migrated that, and updated that, and have modernized that as well. So the city website, I don't know if you've been out to it lately, but it's a lot easier to follow, a lot easier to find the information, and credit to the city staff for doing a lot of that work. So anyway, we, my job is basically to solve problems, so when I hear of a problem, that's what I do, is I look for creative solutions and how we can, how we can actually solve that. And our intent is to make it so that the city runs smoother, so that we can handle the unexpected, so that the day-to-day business is just done well and professionally, and then the unexpected, snowstorms or whatever happen, we can deal with that with our great employees. So, anyway, thank you very much. If you have any questions, let me know.
All right. Thanks to the council for their participation. And with that, we will now try to answer any questions that those who are here might have, and then, I don't know, Jody, if we've got questions that have come in online?
I don't have any that have covered it online.
Okay, well, the pressure's on all of you that are here. You really gotta come up with some good ones. Yeah?
Either they should come to the mic, or you should repeat their question, so that it's all people online.
Okay, I vote you come to the mic. We can do it either way. All right, do we have any questions? Yes, David, in the back.
Well, can I just, can I just say something first, maybe, before a question?
Well, if you're gonna say something, you should probably come up here and speak into the microphone.
That's gonna be something nice.
Well, then definitely speak into the microphone.
I know that's unusual.
Hey, don't you just shorten it? I just want to say this, as a twenty-two-year resident, I completely agree and fully support your statement, mayor. I'm also thankful for your service, and the service of all in the council, the employees, and all the volunteers, and so with that, and those questions. Okay? Doral?
Yes.
What's the max diameter this permission will be chipped?
Six inches probably. What do you think? The diameter of our logs that can chip?
Well, I mean, it's just a little bit thin.
So come up then, because there's only one.
So, any size.
Let's do the average, okay?
No stuff, no stuff, no stuff.
No stumps. Yeah, make sure you know that.
So you can drag it to the curb, it sounds like this.
That's right.
The bigger piece is somebody to take. Okay. In the northeast corner at the bottom of the hill, that used to be part of Woodland Hills, is there any possibility of bringing that back into the city and having input in how it's developed? Because if Salem's looking at that in all these different places, there's a lot of density, I just wonder if there's an opportunity, is that just, I don't know if that's your question, is it an answer now, or just something you're thinking about?
So is that the Davis property?
Yes.
Yeah, it's where that, the pond is up in the corner.
Yeah, the Davis.
So, do I, do I need to hear this?
Yes.
Oh, well, okay. Yeah, so actually, Carrie and I met because, what was that?
We met with the developer.
Yeah, we met with Larry Mylar. It was a help with getting together, excuse me, it was with Craig and Ted Nicholson, they had a connection, they arranged a meeting. And we tried to win them back. We tried, I mean, I've seen the development plans. I don't expect there's much that we can do to change that, but it's still up in the air. So when Carrie and I first met with Larry, you know, I thought it was kind of a dead end. It didn't sound like he would be able to ever consider moving back to Woodland Hills, so to speak, so we could benefit from some of the tax benefits, or some of the tax revenues. But we've had a subsequent meeting with them, and it actually sounds like it's not a certainty that they will stay in Salem. I don't want to get anybody's hopes up, you know, without justification, but, but again, even if we were able to get them to come back, I don't see any way that we would be able to dictate the nature of the development that they're doing.
The other thing is, is annexation laws. Both part, both the cities have to agree to that, so Salem would have to agree before we agree. It starts with the property owner, and then it goes to whoever owns, I mean, whichever city it's in, and then to the city they want to go to. And all three have to agree. I recently met with some of the people in Salem, the council members, and they did not think that it was possible.
And let me just...
That's just being, that's just being honest with you.
Let me kind of emphasize what Carrie just said, because I think it's really important, especially with some of the Facebook posts that have been out there. As a city, we don't control that. It really does start with the property owner. The property owner decides. Now, we actually just annexed some property as a city, but it was based on Robert Nelson's desire to be a part of the city, a prior agreement that we had made with Elk Ridge, and then us agreeing. And so, it...
And so it goes both ways. We were able to annex because the property owner initiated it. It wasn't something that we could initiate or even dictate. It's up to the property owner. The other thing I would mention is a lot of times, and in the case of the Robert Nelson property, it's based on services. So you think about it, if I'm gonna build a home, I need electricity, I need water, I need mm-mm taken care of, and garbage and so forth. Well, some of that, we can provide, that's property. Other parts is it, it would be a little hard, especially the mm-mm, because that stuff don't go uphill. So that's.
Tell it to Salem.
Yeah, it really does depend on the services. And if you were to try to annex that back and then send that mm-mm stuff down to Salem, then you'd have to have some kind of interlocal agreement and it gets really complex. And builders aren't about complexity. I mean, Summit Creek doesn't want more complexity, they want to be able to build. And so the cleaner they can make their, their deal, the better.
But I will just say that Corbett and Ted went our last meeting, and I don't know that some of those utility issues are insurmountable.
Well, thank you so much. I have a couple more, but I don't want to take anyone else's.
Thanks, David.
Who's next?
I'll ask Dave Pratt my annual question. What's happening with West Lofer? When can I drive through?
Yeah, I know.
Thank you for asking that, again. So West Lofer, last year, we, we budgeted for West Lofer to be completed, at least our portion of it. About a third of it, maybe a little bit more than a third, is Summit Creek's responsibility to finish. And so we were planning on doing it together. When we evaluated it, we found that the culvert that currently exists underneath West Lofer has cracked and would either need to be replaced or something would need to be done. Corbett's come up with some very creative ideas on some things that we could do to not replace the culverts so we wouldn't have to dig all of it out. We could just kind of put some pipes on the side to handle the flow. Right now, the way the budget sits, I think Wayne was the one who did these calculations.
Money's still there.
The money is still there, but we're about forty-five thousand dollars short. And I want to make sure that everyone hears this, including those that are on Zoom. One of the reasons why these legal issues are so incredibly frustrating, think about it, we are going to spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars this year just to defend the city on things that we have to defend ourselves on? We don't get a choice, we have to. We can't settle because we're the ones who are being, who are being sued because of a neighborhood dispute. So we can't settle. A hundred and fifty thousand dollars would buy us a brand-new fire truck. That's what we're spending when we spend that on lawsuits instead of the city. So a hundred and fifty thousand dollars would also finish West Lofer easily. So those are the kinds of frustrations that we feel.
David, just make a little money.
Yeah.
Steve, we can have him speak into the microphone. Well, your voice carries, we heard it.
Indishe yourself.
Yeah, so I'm Steve Dicker, I represent Summit Creek. And so when David was talking about, you know, it's our responsibility to finish West Lofer, and Jody confirmed, but I think bonding has already been done, it's ready, the money's already at the city, so we're just waiting for everybody to get together and go do it. So as soon as the city's ready, it's ready to go, so we're not holding it up.
Do you guys have a question about that?
If you come to mine.
I have to go, you guys go.
I don't want to ask.
Well, you can think about it while you think that.
The question, you know, the, the, these, I guess there's bonding in place from Summit Creek, is that what I understood? The question I would have is, what, what effect is inflation gonna have on the bonding? That's always been a challenge with bonding. With bonds of call, there's usually never enough money to compensate, compensate for what is the shortfall. So that would be my question as far as bonding. Will it be enough money on Summit Creek's side when the city eventually gets around to being able to do that? I realize that's probably an unknown, but it was just something we're bringing up.
Yeah, we bonded enough when it was put in place, so.
Yeah.
The risk of inflation is always there.
Yeah, and, and just to keep in mind, the risk of inflation is, is actually huge. When I attended the ULTC meetings four years ago, at that time, road construction costs were increasing forty percent year over year. Now, that's coming from UGOD, that's, that was their number. So if you think about that, the longer we delay some of these projects, the more difficult it gets to finish them simply because of inflation. Now, that's also one of the reasons why, as a city, over the past two years, we've done a lot of bonding. And I know that some residents have questioned whether that was a good idea. Let me at least outline the reasoning. Money in the past, really, five to six years has actually been pretty cheap to get. Like our water bonds actually cost us zero percent interest. So that's basically free money. Yes, we have to pay it back, but we're not having to pay interest on top of it. Then our road bonds were a fairly low interest rate. Now, that would not be true today or even in another year from now. As inflation goes up, your loan costs go up, as interest rates go up. So the fact that the city spent that money in the past two years to do a lot of infrastructure projects is actually saving us a huge amount of money. And yes, we have to repay those loans, yes, we're paying some interest, but it's a lot lower than you would get today and even in the future. So to Aaron's point, it would behoove us to finish West Lofer as quickly as we can.
Please.
I just wondered what the plan is to replace or unplug the culverts along Oak Drive that were ruined by the company that put in the new water pipes? Because every time it rains, our property gets flipped.
I guess that's mine. And, and we have talked about some of the culvert replacement in our staff meetings. I'm actually trying to recall where we landed on that, but it, it is something where I feel like I'm not giving you a good answer and maybe we can talk after because it did, there were reasons when we examined it that it, it felt like an obligation that repairing the culverts was not something that the city could undertake, but I might put.
It should have been, it should have been fixed by the water company to put in those pipes. And that was, would be the responsibility of whoever was supervising that job that didn't see that that was getting done at the time.
Okay.
And that was, what, a year or more down the line?
If, if it's okay, I will get a better answer and connect with you on that, but I, oh, thank goodness, Corbett's sending me a, a rescue line. Corbett, might have an answer.
Is that like phone a friend? There's several things that take place in this. Part of it is, if we wanted the contractor to do that, we would have had to have paid the contractor to do that. Now, to keep costs down and to deal with it, we chose as a city to not pay the contractor to do that. Now, also, when you look at that, the reasons the culverts aren't plugged right now is because they washed out all the fines, all the, the fine material that's on the surface. It's all, it's already all been washed out. And so it's gone. Well, then you do road construction and part of the construction is you stir it all up again. You get the fines back on the surface and it takes a few years to wash all those fines out again to get back to the point where we were before we started the road construction because all those fines had been washed away. Now, again, it's all a matter of cost. The contractor didn't put it into his bids because it would have made the cost too high, we would have done less roads and we deal with it.
But wasn't the road guy, it was the water guys, and they're the ones that ruined it?
They were the same, they were the same guy.
Why aren't, you know, they're different companies, I thought.
No, they were the same guy. It was on that contract, they were the same.
Vancon was the contractor that took the whole job. They did the water line, then they subcontracted out the work to do the roads. So Vancon didn't do the asphalt work, but they were the contractor for the whole job.
Okay, but there was their equipment that ruined these, in some cases crushed them, so they're not gonna wash out because they're ruined. And it seems to me like you hire somebody to do a job and if they wreck something in the process, that they're responsible to replace it.
But the point is, we didn't hire them to clean out the culverts.
No, they weren't, they weren't messed up when they started. They broke them, they did, they did the damage. We watched them, we saw them put the dirt in everything.
I know that's, I know it's arguable, but we didn't pay them because we didn't want the cost to go that much higher. They, they told us upfront that there was gonna be fines, there was gonna be issues because as a contractor, they dealt with this before and they told us upfront, these are the issues you're gonna have, what do you want to do? And we chose to not pay them to do rock line ditches. We chose them to not stabilize the shoulders because of the added cost.
Okay, thank you, Corbett. And I, I know that's not a satisfactory answer, but we would like to work with you and seeing, you know, what solutions are available. But it doesn't, I mean, and we could even look at the contract with, with that particular contractor, but if there's something that can be done, you know, it's certainly something that we would try to do for you.
I'm hearing a lot of words about fines. Corbett, does that mean fine dirt?
Little dirt, small stuff.
Okay. Or about possibly to engage in another mitigation process? I've heard the word inflation, I've heard the word about how much roads are gonna cause more money. Is it possible in this next mitigation project that we may undertake, that is probably gonna take a couple of years by the time everything is approved, that we build into that grant inflated cost for road repair, inflated cost for fine dirt that is causing damage to, and this is where I get a little personal, my property, Brockman's property, Taylor's property, because all this fine dirt from hauling all the truckloads of dirt up to the water tank has now created a lot of fine that is coming down the road. So in this process, how long is it gonna take? We have to go through a couple of approve, or a couple of hearing for all this? What kind of time length are we looking at for the next mitigation process?
All right, so with regards to mitigation, this is again, post-fire mitigation. As you know, right after the fires of 2018, we did a damage assessment and, and it was determined at that time that we would have an emergency watershed protection project and then we'd have what's called a watershed ops project. And those were divided. We additionally requested a FEMA project. So the five, the, the projects that have been done, the switchback trail, the part through, and the parts through the park, that was an NRCS project, federal project. The basin that we have up there on Eagle's Nest was a FEMA project. Now, those have been completed as of last year and we are now going in, we are in the design phase for another NRCS project that is of, has the water tanks, and that's a watershed ops to protect the water tanks from flooding and debris flow. The way the federal government works, you want to talk about bureaucracy and a lot of silos. It is very tight on what is, what is there. And it's not a grant, it's not a grant that's given to us. They, because it is determined to be a flooding issue, they will pay a hundred percent. Last time, we had to have a twenty-five percent match for our NRCS project, a twenty-nine percent match for our FEMA project. This one, if it's determined, still hasn't been totally determined, but it will be one hundred percent covered. But they only cover the actual project, the, the place right there, meaning the basin, which will protect our water tank. They do not do all of the extras outside of the project. So if there's a road that gets damaged or there's something else that happens, that's just, that's just something that we take on ourselves as part of the project. They do do cleanup, they're supposed to do cleanup of the roads. Last time, we took that on ourselves to help with our match because man-hours are part of the matches. So our own people did the road sweeping and other things to try to, in the water tank, the water truck to keep the, to keep that dust down. It is very difficult because we, we live in the desert and it's summertime when they do these things and it's very difficult to keep that dust down. But the project funding stream will only be for the project itself. We can't, we can't ask for other things, they tell us what they're funding.
Okay, so it's only for the project itself? So when it comes time to do our budget considerations, do we take into account what it would cost to dig out these pits if we had to? Because we have these there for a reason, to protect citizens? Or if the debris flow fence comes down again, like it did a year or so ago? I don't know if that was paid for under warranty or did the city?
They, they have, there's no warranty with those, with that debris fence. We were very fortunate because we were the only city that put in that, that debris fence and the contractor came back and fixed it for us without an additional charge. And so we were very fortunate in that. We had built up enough of a relationship and, and with the county and with our engineering firm and everyone, they came back, they, they went and fixed that with no charge. The basins themselves are engineered to, to do the job that they're, that they're designed to do. And so, yes.
If they get full of rocks and debris, they're gonna have to be cleaned out.
If either basin gets, we, if we have an incident and either of them fill up, it is on us to, to clean them out. Yeah, our public works department would be in charge of cleaning those out. And that's why there's a little road on the top. Yeah, 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 no finger on the nose, Corbett, that's you. But yeah, but we have a little road and there is access in there for us to clean that up. And hopefully, when you build it, you never have to use it. That's our hope, right?
But they were actually engineered to be as easy to clean out as possible given that they're old. But they were engineered that way, that's one of the reasons why they're as white as they are and so forth, so.
Yep. That's a good question.
Chloe, do you have a question? You would know when we're in.
Nope. That's towards like home speaking, I'm good.
Chloe's our newspaper. She's the one that gets us that newsletter every week.
Puts in a lot of time.
If we all read it, it's, it's informative. Or Carrie, where'd he go? It's a good job.
Anybody have questions online? Question online?
They want to know if there is any way that the city could notify us when they are going to spray along the road and what they are spraying.
I don't see any reason why we couldn't do that. That's, that's an easy one, right?
Okay.
Okay, then that's a yes.
All right.
As long as you press. You're right.
And that's it. Just if, when people asking a question could state their name, it would be helpful.
Okay. Well, do we have any more questions?
Was there treats?
David, did you have another one?
I just wondered if there was treats or not. So yeah, I did. So.
So, yeah, I did. So.
Well, you got to come up here again.
So, maybe not? I need my steps in.
You don't have your step tracker.
Hey, it's on the phone. Okay, this deals with the garbage man.
Perfect.
If we do a garbage truck or trucks, is it possible to shut it with other cities? Because when our garbage comes, it's like done the same day, right? And so, that's one part of the question. The other part is, how about the recycling part? Is that a whole separate entity?
So, no, the recycling is not. So, even Waste Management currently, they'll either come first and pick up recycle and then go to the transfer station and dump. Or they'll do it last, but it's the exact same truck. So, they actually use the recycling to clean the truck out. I didn't tell you that. But no, so we would, my hope, and I haven't been able to speak with other cities. I've spoken a little bit with the mayor of Goshen about this. But there are other cities that we potentially could partner with. Because you are correct, we would have, our truck would be used once a week, in essence. Now, the nice thing too is that would mean we would control when it actually did get picked up. So, your days of asking on Facebook page, are they actually going to pick up today? Will be over. Unless there's other extraneous circumstances. Blizzard thinks about it, and we'd control this a little bit better. There was something else I have to talk on. I can't remember.
Exactly.
No.
Where does the garbage get taken?
So, there you go. Thank you, Sheri. I leave it to Sheri to remind me of all the things I didn't say. So, the garbage all goes to the transfer station in Spanish, or in Springville currently. On Thursday, we are actually having a groundbreaking ceremony at 3:00 at the new Spanish Fork transfer station.
That's got to be special.
It's going to be special. I'm really excited.
He wants you all to come.
They will have treats. David, I expect you. Tastes delicious. But this transfer station is going to be amazing. So, I was at the transfer station this morning, talking with the director. They hit an all-time record of, we had 480 ton of garbage on Friday dropped off. Right now, if you go down there, there is piles upon piles. It is mountains of garbage. And this is why we're needing the new transfer station. Our current transfer station is currently rated to take 20 ton a day. So, you can see how much they are working to make sure that they are able to control it. They are also, to help you guys understand, so Terry Feckland is the director of the transfer station, and he is a genius. But he's also been working hard with our landfill. And so, one thing that I know a lot of people ask me about is, you know, how does our landfill do in comparison to the rest of the nation? Our landfill is one of the most efficient and cleanest landfills in the nation. They are harvesting all the methane gas and pumping it back into the grid for the natural gas. And we have about 100 years at current usage rates plus estimated growth of landfill left out there at the new area plant. So, there's some really cool things going on with garbage and recycling. And recycling is actually drastically increasing. One thing to remember, I've spoken about this at a few city councils recently, you're now able to put your pizza boxes in the recycle bin. Just do the shake test. If you shake the box and you don't hear anything, you're good to go. If you're like me and my family, my boys don't eat the crust, so they all end up in the box. So, just check those in the normal garbage can, check the box, and recycle, and we're good to go.
All right. Oh, Mylan?
Yeah.
So, I throw this away.
Recycle.
What you need?
Yeah, so I'm Mylan Malkovich. Yes, and I am related to Carrie. Well, I just want to make a comment because I think sometimes we get, my job responsibilities, so I'm an architect, and I'm responsible for church meeting houses, churches, Christ almighty, St. Meeting Houses, all the way from Provo down to Mesquite, Nevada, border-to-border. So, I work in a lot of small cities, some big cities. And sometimes I think we lose perspective of really how good we have it. And I know all of our concerns are valid concerns. I have concerns, our property, we had, a few years ago, we had a gully washer above us, and we ended up with about four feet of very nice topsoil deposited on our driveway.
That was wet.
That was wet. And the nice part about it is we were on vacation, and our neighbors came and cleaned it up.
And yes.
And.
A lot of you kept our house.
And yeah, that's some devastating things that happened. Now, I just have been working with Cedar City, and they just did a drainage study for some very extensive rainstorms they had last August in their city. And the drainage study just came back, and I met with the city engineer last Thursday. And some of our churches were flooded, many of the people's homes, their basins were flooded, and not just a foot or two, some of them all the way up to the main floor level. And I think it's just, so in, from my experience, my perspective is that, yes, we have some issues, you know, we have some drainage issues. And I do work with Corbett and Ted on the, I'm sorry. Sorry about that. Duck season. I work on the Roads Committee. But, you know, what we have to keep in mind is that you can't drain 20-plus miles of roads down the hill and just expect that that's going to solve all the problems. It's just impossible. So, we're looking at some solutions to dissipate some of that water more at the source. And yeah, there's some problems in culverts. I have, the culvert under my driveway got plugged up years ago, and I just pulled it out. And now, we deal with that all the time. And I frankly, still have some sandbags at the top of my driveway. But in perspective, Cedar City, they're looking at $50 million worth of repairs that need to be made to their, to their infrastructure to avoid, you know, waters and drainage. So, I'm kind of energized that we just have a few, you know, culverts and a few little problems to deal with. And yeah, there's issues to deal with. But in perspective, it's relatively small. And I know that the city staff and the people, and a lot of volunteer work goes on where a lot of these bigger cities, you know, they have multiple layers of staff that do these things. I just think that we're really, we're much more on top of what's going on, a lot of which is because of our, because of our citizen involvement and the people that help with things, people jump in and help each other like we were helped when our property was in danger. And I just don't want to lose the perspective, and I don't want you to feel like that we're just always, you know, the sky is always falling because it's not. And we do appreciate all you're doing with all the resources. And frankly, it could be worse, and it may be worse sometimes. But I think, you know, I feel pretty good as a citizen. We've lived here, been property owners for over 30 years, lived here for about 30 years. And yeah, I think we're in pretty good shape with everything that's going on. And just an observation, I want to tell you thanks for all you do. And it's, it is a thankless job, but I'm glad we just are having little problems and not $50 million worth of problems. Thank you very much for all you do. And we do have the best city staff. In fact, I just need to tell you, we did get a call today. The church was leaking 11,000 gallons of water a day through our irrigation system. And the city notified us of that. We went down and turned the water.
You couldn't see it. You couldn't see it.
Yeah, it was eight gallons a minute that was leaking, and there's 1,440 minutes in a day. So, if you multiply that out, that's a lot, 330-some thousand gallons last month. And we had a problem, and now we're, it's identified, and we're going to get it fixed.
Because you couldn't see the water, nobody had reported it. But when the city saw that the bill was that far up, they said, there's got to be a leak someplace, which we're really fortunate, our staff does that for you individually as well. If you have a leak in your house, our staff will notify you before it gets out of control. And so, that's really something that probably no other city does. They just say, pay the bill.
So, if they don't do it.
Right?
It does not please the concert.
Okay, Corbett is signaling me with something. All right, sorry about that. Thanks, Mylan. So, if you take nothing else from this meeting, then I just remember we're better than Cedar City.